I'd like to call the meeting to order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Howard, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Emmett?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Dr. Campbell?
Here.
Mrs. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Douglas?
Here.
Mr. Means?
Present.
Mrs. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Schubel?
Present.
Mr. Spicuzzo?
Present.
Nine members present this evening.
Thank you, sir. As many of you know, in February Bethel Park High School received the 2013 Master Builders Association of Western Pennsylvania's Building Excellence Award in the Best New Construction Over $25 Million category. The MBA Awards of Excellence are the highest and most sought-after commercial construction industry awards in Western Pennsylvania and highlight the positive impact of the construction industry in our region. The award application was submitted by Mascaro Construction, our general contractor on the project, and tonight we are pleased to welcome two representatives from Mascaro to our meeting. John Mascaro Jr., the president and CEO, and John West, our project manager for our high school project. Thank you both for joining us this evening. We continue to be extremely proud of our new high school and in particular the quality of its construction, and I was remiss because Mr. Disk is also in attendance with us this evening, brought back as part of our team as our construction, he was with the Mascaro Construction Company, so I couldn't get those two confused, right? That quality was only possible because of your commitment to the project and oversight of all the details. Not only did you build us the finest high school facility in Western Pennsylvania and possibly the state, but you also completed the project eight months ahead of schedule and with a stellar safety record. At this time, I would like you to join me at the podium to accept a certificate of appreciation from the board as our way of saying thank you for everything you did to construct this award-winning high school that provides our community with a school they can be proud of and one that will serve our students well into the future. And would the audience please join me in congratulating these gentlemen?
(applause)
Me in a few words.
It was just John Mascaro, my Bethel Park resident, also, it was just plain an honor to have built this school, we had a great project team, great construction manager, school board, I think it was, it was a wonderful project, we're just happy to play this, so thank you very much for your business to the community, it was my work on this project. Thank you. Thank you very much. When Matt Howard called and asked us to attend, he had asked if we could bring this crystal, so I went out and talked to our marketing director and she said, "Funny you should ask that because the MBA gave us a second one, so we can give this to you and you can keep this."
Gee, do I take that home and sleep with that tonight too, like I did there?
(laughter) I'll have to find a place for it, so this is yours.
John, we just thought that you were carrying it since you got it.
And I just want to echo what John said, the teamwork on this job, as I said that night, was terrific, and you look around the room and see how involved everybody on this board was with this project, and that's what made it happen, and this gentleman back here was a huge, huge part of this job, so thank you very much, we appreciate it.
John, this, the room that we're in tonight is the Thomas A. Knight Community Room. We dedicated it in honor of Tom Knight, whose vision it was to build the new high school, so it's only fitting that that be placed here in this room, so thank you very much for the honor of having a copy of it here. Thank you, I know he's smiling on you so much.
And it's also my pleasure this evening to welcome back to the boardroom a former school board director, Dan Duff, who is currently serving as vice president of the Bethel Park Community Foundation, and he has a couple grants, I think, to bestow upon.
Good evening, good evening to the board director, it's nice to see you, and I am here on behalf of the all-volunteer board trustees of the Bethel Park Community Foundation. The Bethel Park Community Foundation is a nonprofit organization here in Bethel Park, and its sole responsibility is to raise money and then give out grants to the community in the areas of community facilities, education for all citizens of all ages, recreation and leisure, exposure to fine arts and the performing arts, and community health and safety, and it's my great pleasure to announce a $1,250 award to the Bethel Park Blackhawks Television Group for a TV production car, so Dylan, would you please go up here?
That's Mr. Schustuski.
(laughter) Thank you very much, I appreciate it. We were also very happy to award up to $3,000 to the Bethel Park Athletic Hall of Fame Organization for the construction of additional trophy cases for the Hall of Fame recipients, so Tony, would you please go up?
That's Mr. Fisher.
I'm sorry. Mr. Fisher. Thank you very much. If anyone has any questions about Bethel Park Community Foundation, we do have our own website, it's www.dpcf.org, or you'd be happy to reach out to any of the trustees who are all volunteers. Thank you very much, Mrs. Cook.
Thank you.
Nice to see the board again.
Nice to see you all, thanks for the great awards.
Thank you.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Under policy and committee, we would like to take under number one, policy one, two, three, club sports in every meeting this evening.
Okay. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Then I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
That's at the regular meeting of March 25, 2014. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held April 15, 2014, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and April 22, 2014, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report and Dr. Stark.
Good evening, it is my pleasure to share with you this evening the following items of good news about the Bethel Park School District. This year, Bethel Park High School can boast three state forensics champions, all from our sophomore class. Congratulations to Sean McLean, who is the state forensics champion in the legislative debate event, and also the recipient of the Peggy Ann Madden Outstanding Speaker Award. Also coming home from the Pennsylvania Forensics Tournament at Susquehanna University as state champions are Jack Brownfield, Christian Smetana, in the public forum debate. Five other students finished at the semifinal level or higher. Congratulations also go to Jared Single, Emily Augustine, Jamie Cavrak, Molly Graham, and Joe Trishler. The Bethel Park High School chapter of the National Honor Society recently inducted 79 students into its ranks. These students must demonstrate scholarship by maintaining a minimum 3.85 grade, a minimum 3.85 grade point average, as well as demonstrate leadership, service, and character. Congratulations to all of the new inductees. Bethel Park High School German students brought home 11 awards at the 2014 American Association of Teachers of Germans Three Rivers German Day competition, including six first-place awards, one second-place award, and four third-place awards. Congratulations to our first-place winners Erin Burkhart, Danielle Scaris, Logan Tuitt, Andrew Dewar, Thomas Weber, and Brooke Von Aaron Crook. Our second-place student, Adley Flowers, and our third-place students Erica Miller, Katie Zilkowski, Rachel Dodson, and Erin Burkhart. In other German news, Bethel Park High School senior Erin McMahan has been selected as the recipient of the 2014 Delta Epsilon Phi Kathy Wilson Memorial Scholarship, and she will travel to Germany this summer, live with a German family, attend classes at a German secondary school, and participate in excursions to places of cultural and historical significance. She was selected from a national pool of candidates, congratulations Erin. Several Bethel Park High School and Independence Middle School students earned either silver medals or cum laude certificates on the national Latin exams. Congratulations to silver medalist Brianna Shannon, Joey Wright, and Heather Walker, and to cum laude certificate winners Paige Davidson, Brooke Von Aaron Crook, Courtney Mans, Ken Barnhart, Michelle Raymond, Ryan Kelly, Jeremy Hugh, David Erzen, Brittany Catch, Julia Angotti, and Adam Ushiano, as well as Erin Copeland. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School freshman Jessica Veman, who was awarded a $50 sponsor award from Mascaro Construction Company at the Pittsburgh Regional Science and Engineering Fair. The award was for her project, The Unique Properties of Pike Creek, which received the award in the outstanding work in the field of engineering category. Four Bethel Park High School seniors, Jared Single, Adam Larson, Valerie Potus, and Liam Wolf, were selected as 2014 Outstanding Young Citizens in the South and West Regions by the Tribune Review. They were among a group of 50 area high school students who were honored at an awards banquet held earlier this month at the Embassy Suites. Students are selected based on their academic achievements, school activities, leadership, and community contributions. Congratulations to all four of these outstanding students. Bethel Park High School sophomores Grace Brugeman, Macy Hall, and Natalie Lalama were selected as the Bethel Park Youth Volunteers of the Year by In-Community magazines in recognition of their efforts to regularly correspond with American servicemen and women who are stationed overseas. Through an organization they founded called Bring a Smile to the Service, the students will be profiled in the upcoming issue of In Bethel Park Magazine. Six Bethel Park High School students who attend the Steel Center Area Vocational Technical School earned the Extra Effort Award for the third quarter of the 2013-14 school year in recognition of their outstanding efforts in attendance, theory work, shop work, work ethic, and attitude. Congratulations to Steven Ott, Evan Sloss, Kelsey Gensler, Alexander Gordon, Jeremy Parsons, and Michael Marmone. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School art student Amrita Bodine, who won two awards at the Visions and Voices Student Art Exhibit, which recently concluded at the Pittsburgh Technical Institute in Oakdale. Amrita earned a second-place award in the Two-Dimensional Fine Arts Division for her painting, which is featured on the slide, and a third-place award in the Multimedia Video Division for her advertisement and webpage design. Bethel Park High School trumpet player Joe Beaver and percussionist David Olman are performing at Heinz Hall this evening in a side-by-side concert with members of the Pittsburgh Symphony Orchestra. Congratulations to both of these musicians who were selected for this once-in-a-lifetime Bethel Park High School senior Adam Larson was honored by the Rotary Club of Bethel Park as its March Student of the Month. Each month, the Rotary recognizes a Bethel Park High School student for outstanding contributions to school and/or community service. Adam was recognized for his award-winning efforts to take the Hawkeye newspaper to a multimedia format, and for his initiative to turn his interest in writing and energy from a non-paid internship to a paid part-time position with the Shale Institute. He was also recognized for his work with the National Honor Society and his Eagle Scout When Bethel Park High School students visit Kennywood this spring for the annual Physics Day, their experiences will be enhanced with a GoPro camera obtained through a successful grant written by high school physics teacher Lee Cristofano. The cameras are similar to what you see contestants use on TV shows like The Amazing Race, and the high school students will be wearing this equipment to obtain real-time footage, which they will convert into a video to show how riders experience things such as force and acceleration when on an amusement ride. Congratulations to the Bethel Park High School hockey team, who may have left Pittsburgh a little disappointed that they did not win the Penguin Cup this year, but that disappointment was easily erased as the team traveled to Omaha, Nebraska to compete in the 2014 USA Hockey National Championships. Bethel Park was one of 32 teams invited to participate in this tournament, and the team defeated Providence Catholic from Illinois to bring the national championship back to Bethel Park. The Blackhawks are the first Pennsylvania team to win this prestigious national championship. The district and other governmental agencies will be recognizing the team for this outstanding achievement at our May 27th board meeting. The district is pleased to be partnering with Bethel Park resident Diane Ford for the creation of the Samuel and Anna Mae Richardson Community Garden. Ms. Ford inherited a piece of property on Willow Avenue and decided to use the land to create a community garden that would not only provide healthy foods for needy neighbors, but it would also serve as a great learning experience for our students. Franklin students are heavily involved in the garden, having planted lettuce, carrot, radish, onion, and cucumber seeds in individual pots, which are now growing in their classrooms. The students will have the opportunity to plant their veggies in the garden once the plants get larger. High school tech ed teacher Bill Wells has offered to create raised beds, and IMS School would also like to help with the garden. Not surprisingly, Bethel Park resident Andy Amrin is also heavily involved with the garden. We believe this endeavor will establish a great tradition of service and learning for our students, and we can't wait until the plants are ready for harvest. You can watch segments about the garden on BPTV's YouTube channel. Lincoln Elementary School received a $1,000 grant from the Dick's Sporting Goods Pittsburgh Marathon's Kids of Steel Program. The money is to be used toward the school's physical education program to promote health and wellness. Lincoln was entered into this grant program because 185 Lincoln students are running in the Pittsburgh Kids Marathon as part of the Lincoln Lager Group at the school, led by instructional support teacher Rose Di Gregorio. As a result of being one of five schools selected to receive this grant money through a random drawing, the Bethel Park School District students from Lincoln, Memorial, and Washington, who are also planning to run the kids marathon, will be included in one of the first four heats of the kids marathon. The race will be Saturday, May 3, at 10:00 a.m. Over 300 Bethel Park Elementary students are signed up to participate. If you're at the point that day, be prepared to see a sea of black and orange shirts crossing that finish line, and know that Bethel Park is well-represented in this event. Good luck to all of this year's kids marathon participants. William Penn's second-grade students in Mrs. Pedalino's room learned that you can save a 40-foot tree from being cut down by merely recycling a four-foot-high stack of newspapers. In addition to learning about the value of recycling, Mrs. Pedalino's students have also been taking advantage of the new technology in their school, thanks to the grant of Kindle Fires to their school from the Pittsburgh Penguins Foundation. Bethel Park High School social studies teacher Thomas Hare was named the local winner of the Barnes &amp; Noble My Favorite Teacher Contest. Mr. Hare was nominated by Bethel Park High School senior Sean Varley and was chosen from nearly 70 entries at the South Hills Barnes &amp; Noble location. Students were invited to nominate their favorite teacher to explain how their teacher has influenced their life and reveal why they appreciate and admire them. Mr. Hare and Sean were honored at an event held at the store on April 17, and Mr. Hare is now entered into a regional competition, and if he is selected as one of the five regional winters, winners, he will be considered for the Barnes &amp; Noble National My Favorite Teacher Award. Good luck to Mr. Hare, and congratulations to Sean for writing a winning essay. That concludes our report for this evening.
Thank you so much, a lot of interesting things going on. I don't see anyone from student government here, anyone from PTA, PTO council? Yes.
Evening, I'm Harriet, honorary secretary on the board of Ben Franklin's PTO. I'm happy to share the board with our president, Robert McCormick, Deidre Cannon, and Katara McGuire, our co-vice presidents, Danielle Uselman, our secretary, and Shelley DeGiorno and Heidi Calhoun, our troopers. We're in a transition year at Ben Franklin. It's been a great meeting to know everyone, forming friendships and making us the tight-knit group that we've become. We're very lucky to have Robert on our board and his continued support to aid in our transition next year. At Ben Franklin, we pride ourselves on how well we work together in a non-biased form, how focused we are on problem-solving and open communication, and how proudly we can say that we have the opportunity each day to make a lot of people very happy. We're proud of the fact that we can confidently say that Ben Franklin has a family feel. We focus on our children first, and we know that to give our children the best experience possible, it takes all of us, school staff and faculty, students, PTO and parents, to be as successful as we are. We're so fortunate to have the unwavering support of Dr. Dickinson, our principal, our leader, and the glue that brings us all together. Her positivity and dedication inspires us daily, making our school a wonderful place to be. All of these factors allow us to provide our children with a wonderfully fun, enriching, welcoming, and safe educational experience. Our PTO keeps very busy. Before this school year had even begun, we hosted a teddy bear picnic to help our incoming kindergarten class become familiar with our school and staff. The first of the year moved forward and our schedule stayed packed, starting off with Deidre Cannon's vision, our Read Box read-a-bond, based on the red box, our students, based on the red box. Our students log their hours of reading and turn them into the Read Box each day. We also have Market Day Kickoff, Fall Bingo, Santa Workshop, Sadeki Puppet Show, Breakfast with Santa, and the Stalastic Book Fair. We started off the new year with our second annual science fair, enjoyed another successful calendar party, delivered candy grams for Valentine's Day, celebrated our 100th Day of School with a thumbs up for our students, hosted a very successful Spring Bingo, the most successful in six years. We enjoyed a wonderfully attended Reading with the Stars, distributed bookmarks to all students for Earth Day. We've been enjoying our pop-tap contest with each classroom competing against the other to see who can bring in the most. We're giving away two $500 scholarships to high school students, and we've made donations to Little Johnson's Daycare in partnership with them. We're also very excited about our exciting partnership with the community garden. Looking ahead, end of year is nearing, and we have no intent on slowing down. This week, we'll hold our ice cream social and art show, following just around the corner is our talent show with kindergarten orientation not far behind, and rounding out that particular week with our second annual spelling game. Also coming up, we have Olympic Day, our end-of-year party, field trips for each classroom, and fourth grade graduation. We're so proud to be a part of the Ben Franklin family and so pleased to be able to make such a positive impact on our children. We thank everyone involved, the parents, staff, administration, and school board for allowing us all that we do. Without the team effort from all involved, we wouldn't be able to achieve such success. I also have updates from each of the schools. Neil Armstrong, they're looking at their Limo Morai schedule for this Friday during school lunch. 26 students will participate, and they were their top sellers for the Winter Magazine fundraiser. This fundraiser alone raised approximately $5,500. We're gearing up for fifth and sixth grade Fun Days, looking forward to lots of fun ahead. Anticipating the upcoming staff appreciation luncheon, participating fully with the community garden, they're helping Ben Franklin in any way they can. We've added to our budget to make an annual donation to the community garden. At Memorial, they called their annual talent show at IMS and had a great showing of talent by Memorial students. Unfortunately, two acts were unable to go on because of illness. The hit of the night was the dancing bobbleheads act, which had the students dancing around with hats that had pictures of teachers on them to make them bobbleheads. The students at Memorial that will be participating in the kids marathon are doing a practice run along the Montour Trail on Thursday. Parents are getting ready for Teacher Appreciation Week. The Spring Book Fair and Fun Fair will be held in May, and they're also having their last PTO meeting on May 12, where they will be voting in their new board members. At George Washington, the accelerated reading program has ended. Students who have met their accelerated reader grade point goal receive one complimentary reverse ticket to the Wednesday, June 11 Wild Thanksgiving. The Spring Stalastic Book Fair was held last week, all students received a free book courtesy of PTO. The online book fair will continue until April 26. The students show off their talents at the annual talent show, which will be held on Friday, April 25, at 6:30 p.m. at IMS. This year's theme is the Muppets. The We Run Club has been busy training for the Kids of Steel Pittsburgh Marathon in May. The annual train run will be held on April 29 at 7:00 p.m. The students will run one mile in preparation for the kids marathon. Upcoming events include Student Appreciation Week, which will run from April 28 to May 2nd, and Teacher Appreciation Week, which will run from May 5 to May 9th, Sports Day, which will be held on May 21st, and the annual family picnic to be held on May 30. At Abraham Lincoln, Abraham Lincoln is one of five schools who will receive a Kids of Steel grant in the amount of $1,000 to be used for their physical education program. For every 50 students that they register, their school was given an entry into this chance, and since they had 185 students registered, they received three chances and won. What that also means is that on race day, their school will be in the first starting corral, and they need to start the race first. Lincoln students should be so proud, the school raised $321.40 for the month of January. Abraham Lincoln Elementary is excited to welcome our new kindergarten class of 2014-15 on May 14 for their orientation. The students of Lincoln Elementary have been busy the past few Wednesday mornings as their special person's breakfast has been taking place. The students and guests have the opportunity to walk the red carpet, make a craft, take a picture, and enjoy breakfast. A fun time has been had by all who have attended. And at IMS, MSPTSO is getting ready for staff appreciation by planning a picnic-style luncheon to be held in May. Plans are underway for eighth grade Fun Day, being held on May 30 at the High School Stadium. Eighth graders will participate in team building activities and will be able to have fun all day. Students will participate in activities such as inflatable basketball, inflatable running ball, inflatable obstacle course, photo booth, airbrush tattoos, dodgeball, and a homerun derby. Of course, the day wouldn't be complete without music from a local DJ and food. On the same day, our seventh graders will enjoy Rita's Ice in the IMS cafeteria and will get a chance to unwarn and socialize. Thank you.
Thank you, and I concur, it takes all of us, but wow, what you all do, and you and your fellow PTO members from throughout this district is just, thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Solicitor's report.
The Solicitor's report has been submitted to the board and nothing further to add.
Thank you, sir. Committee reports, curriculum.
Yes, curriculum met on April the 9th, and we had a very lengthy discussion of almost three hours of some things we were discussing about the changing faces of learning, and we will be continuing that conversation tomorrow evening. We start with finance at 7:00 p.m., and when we're done with finance, we then go into curriculum, and we will continue on the agenda that we couldn't complete on April 9, we had so much to discuss.
Thank you. Public comments on agenda items, agenda items this evening. Seeing none, we'll move into business items, Curriculum Committee and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook, there are five items under Curriculum this evening, would any, like any of those held out? Hearing none, I move the approval of curricula. Number two, the comprehensive guidance plan. Number three, the national forensics competition in Overland Park, June 14 through the 21st, 2014. Number four, conference requests, and number five, independent study. Move for approval.
Items one through five under Curriculum Committee have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are 12 items under Personnel, are there any that anyone would like to have held out?
I would like number 10 held out.
Number 10. Okay, any others? If not, I move that we approve item one, which is approval of substitutes, two, approval of extra duty responsibility program. of extra duty responsibility program, three, approval of leave of absence, four, approval of administrative tuition reimbursement, five, approval of summer help for custodial maintenance, and six, approval of staffing changes, seven, involuntary transfer, eight, approval of 2014 Extended School Year Program, 11, appointment of personnel, and 12, acceptance of resignation.
Okay, back up there, honey. Yeah, we're leaving out 10, but eight was change of assignment, then nine was extended school year, you missed eight.
Oh, I missed it, okay, sorry. Sorry, change of assignment is eight, nine, approval, 2014 Extended School Year Program, 11, appointment of personnel, and 12, acceptance of resignation.
Good, I need a second. Items one through nine and 11 and 12 under Personnel have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mrs. Rule.
I move item 10, approval of substitute principal.
Second? Item number 10 has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to strike the through the May 2nd, 2014 out, and instead insert as needed throughout the district.
For the remainder.
For the remainder of this one year.
So that's a motion to amend.
To amend.
As indicated, and you need a second on the motion.
Second.
Right, second.
Is there any discussion as to the amendment, proposed amendment?
I haven't got down who, okay. So I have a motion to amend item number 10 to strike May 2nd and replace it with as needed through the 2013-14 school year. That was moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Dr. Campbell. Any discussion on this item?
There's not a lot we could really discuss about this in a public venue, from what I understand, is this is, we have HIPAA responsibilities, we have personal responsibilities too, but I think Jim's amendment gives us a little bit more leeway to the end of the year to accommodate this condition.
Any other questions or any comments on this item? All in favor of the motion to amend, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment carries nine to zero, so we're back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion of that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Spicuzza.
Thank you very much. Seeing one item on the agenda tonight, I would move the following item, awarding of the Independence Middle School parking lot renovation project, the general contractor, Ayla Brownie, for a total of $580,201, and electrical contractor Buck Electrical for $82,300.
Item one under Facilities and Services Committee has been moved by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mr. Means. Any discussion of this item?
I just have a comment. Mr. Howard, could you tell us if we were under budget on this bid?
Yeah, the budget presented to the Board was $750,000, so we will be under budget as it stands right now. That was the bid budget, so we did have some contingency in that also, which we hope.
In the original 750,000?
It was 750 plus a contingency, so hopefully the whole job will come in under budget.
And we feel comfortable with this?
Yeah, but we did our due diligence on checking both of the contractors out. We've used John Book before, recently, and he's done a good job for us, and then we did do some checking on Liberoni on their service throughout the area, both Kevin Hayes has worked with him in the past and has done good work.
Any other questions or comments on the Board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries nine to zero. Finance Committee and Dr. Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President. There are eight items presented to the Board tonight from Finance Committee. Do any of the Directors wish to have an item held out, a particular item held out for Seeing none, I move that the Board approved, number one, approval of the 2014 salaries and bills, number two, March 2014 financial report, number three, budgetary transfers, number four, approval of student services contracts, number five, elevator maintenance services agreement, number six, awarding of refuse and recycling contract, number seven, approval of the maintenance agreements on the chillers at the high school, and number eight, acceptance of donations, which I feel obligated to read. One, a donation of $783.48 for the replacement parts of Big Bubba, AKA The Turtle, a portable backstop cage from the Bethel Park baseball boosters, a donation of two 12-foot pool vaults by track coach Mark Jacobs valued at $800, and donation of a pair of soccer goals for shared soccer and football fields at the high school by the Bethel Park Soccer Association and the Bethel Park High School Soccer Boosters valued at $6,875.
Thank you. Items one through eight under Finance have been moved by Dr. Campbell and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Policy Committee and Mr. Means.
There are three items under Policy Committee, would anybody like any of the three, let go? I didn't remove the first one, correct? No, no. I didn't remove the first one, I mean, 123 out of the first one.
We held out 123 from discussion tonight, and we'll put that on the committee meeting, yes.
Then I move that, number one, approval of policies, third and final readings, policy 513, evaluation of classified employees, number eight, 10 dot 2, transportation video slash audio recording, number two, policy revisions, third and final readings, number two, 10, use of medications, 313, evaluation of administrative employees, 413, evaluation of temporary slash professional employees, 808, food services, 808.1, school lunch slash breakfast program, charge meals, number 915, booster organizations, number three, deletion of policies, number 412, evaluation of professional employees, number 512, evaluation of classified employees.
Second. Items one through three under Policy Committee have been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mr. Amadis, will you take other for me this evening?
I will, there's one other item, one item under other, which is student agreement, and I move student agreement, which reads, "The Board of School Directors Approves the Administration's Recommendation to Approve the Resolution and Agreement for Student Number 003681."
Second.
Item one under other has been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries nine to zero, and we are now up to the part of public comments on anything you wish to address the Board on. Come to the microphone, name an address, two minutes to comment to the Board.
I'm Gus Oakley, 329 Allen Dale Drive, Bethel Park. First off, I'd like to have a popery of subjects I'd like to talk about. The first one being, to thank Mr. Sustich, who is no longer a board member, for the work during pre-construction and construction that he did with the advancement of having our beautiful new high school. And I'd like to thank the Board, those who voted to have the high school built. I think we have a beautiful facility, and I know that it's a lot more secure than what the old one was, and I think that in this day and age, that is very important. I'd like to congratulate you for honoring the hockey team in the near future. Just for your knowledge, they are the first high school team in Pennsylvania to win a national title. Now you could do them a big favor by putting back the stipend that was taken away years ago, and I'm going to tell you how you do it and not cost you money. Call up the whip and complain why the Bethel Park with their facilities only get one extra football game, playoff game, and two extra basketball games. Shore Valley got 20, Ballroom got 20. I don't think we got our fair share. If we got our fair share, you could have the money in which to put back the stipend, the local boosters could make money with refreshments. Now I'd like to ask the question, did the Board or the Administration have anything or asked the students where they would like to graduate from? I know you don't answer questions, so I'll answer it, I know you didn't. I think it's a lack of common sense not to have it, if you have the, whether you usually get in June, to have it outside. I'd like to even see it maybe be done in the evening. I had to do one inside, it left me very, very sad, and I think that we should strongly consider in the next year to do it outdoors. It's a beautiful thing that Bethel has always done and done right. Now I'd like to talk about, since Dr. Campbell has now taken over the Finance Committee, I'd like to see if he'd like to come over and speak to his neighbors at Eagle Trace, like Donna Cook did, and explain why the gift the two widows got moving into our community, they got their assessment appeal, which is going to cost them $100 more per month. When I was on the Board, we did appeals, but only the commercial property, not residential property. Council doesn't do it, I just don't think it's proper that this Board doesn't. I really think that the reason why that's being done is we have one of our solicitor's daughter that we have to keep busy. Dr. Campbell, if you checked the financials, I'll bet you'd be surprised to see how much money the solicitors have collected in the last three years. I'm willing to bet you that it's equal to what you pay your superintendent, and it's my opinion that she's a lot more valuable. My last comment is on the cable company. I feel that the council meetings are done beautifully. I think yours, if you ever watch it, are done very quarterly. It's amazing to me that 30 years ago, my son's high school hockey games were done on cable, 33 years later, they're not done. That's called reverse progress, as far as I'm concerned. I did see, though, tonight, that still hasn't really changed that much, that school board meetings do not start on time, and we do not have a bill list. Thank you for listening to me, I know I'm over time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we'll move into Board Comments, and Mrs. Dobis, I think I'm down at your end to start this evening.
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Mr. Means.
I really don't have a lot to say tonight.
Mrs. Buckley.
Well, thank you, I always have something to say. First of all, I would like to thank all the folks involved with the police pal in the Steelers game, which was held on April 4th in honor of Sergeant Charles Bonzak. He was our first police pal at William Penn, and a wonderful man, so it was our pleasure to be there and enjoy the activities there. A reminder that we will be meeting again tomorrow for Finance and Curriculum, we hope the folks come out. We've met at Pathfinder School, April 16th, and we're up to 91 children now at Pathfinder, so things are moving along. And I personally would like to thank all the folks involved with the donations this evening between the Bethel Park Community Foundation and the other folks that were mentioned as part of the report, it's almost $13,000 that was donated this evening, and I truly appreciate that, and it certainly benefits our children, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Spicuzza.
It's really hard to go after Cindy, I have to say.
You say it's hard to go last, first, after Cindy, it's hard for you all the time.
I'm trying to get every angle in I can. I do echo a lot of the comments that she made, and I would hope that at tomorrow night's budget meeting, we have more, a great deal of attendance, I think it's one of the most important aspects of the whole process, I mean, we can't educate the children without the budget, and it just, it just all rolls from there, so please, come on back tomorrow, we can't wait to be here, I know that, so, and we enjoy this, and I apologize for us coming out late this evening, we had some matters that ran over, a lot of our board members were here at 6 o'clock tonight and ran all the way until quarter after 8, and we truly apologize for that, which is something that we could not handle, we had presentations that we wanted to get done, and that really wasn't, you know, our intent to be late, so apologize for that. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rose?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Diane Ford for the gift of land, but more importantly, for the gift of a vision of the Community Garden. It provides such tremendous opportunities for interdisciplinary learning opportunities for our students from kindergarten all the way through graduation. We touched a little bit in the slide about the elementary children at Franklin in particular, who are growing seeds with much anticipation, and we're finding out which teachers have a green thumb and are guiding their kids along by the height of their plants, but just the potential for such growth and the interconnection with STEM education is just a tremendous, tremendous gift to this community. We have dreams of going after some of those community grants from the foundation and possibly some other grants in the future, with visions of building you a greenhouse as well for our students so that they can learn year long. Thank you, Diane, it was a beautiful gift.
Thank you, that was part of my speech too, and I go last, so you know. Mrs. Rule.
To piggyback on that, they'll be looking for volunteers, anybody who wants to work in the garden, sign up, let us know. I would just like to say that the AIU filled their six positions, that we are now a full board, so that is good. Shasta is having their conference this coming weekend, the end of the month, and that is where we honor a student who has overcome challenges throughout their lifetime here at school, so that will be the last Saturday in the morning. And also, that Steel Center is looking for internships, and they had an opportunity to meet with the President when he was in town, Community College, and he was excited, the Director was very excited to hear that they are promoting all forms of education, not only college-bound, but all careers, and they're trying to emphasize the trades because of the high need that there is at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. She. Thank you, no comments. Dr. Campbell.
We've heard a lot of superlatives tonight. I'm not going to recant the highlights, because Dr. Stark, it still remains my favorite part of the evening, because you hear really all the incredible accolades, just the diversity of everything that's done, so I won't, I won't reiterate a lot of those, but again, great accolades to our construction team for the design, for the implementation, and for the construction of just like a top-notch high school, you know? We've already realized, obviously, some, you know, you can understand intrinsically the manifest security benefits of that high school, but also, we're starting to see and realize already a lot of the utility benefits from it as well. You know, utility bills have dropped from the early estimates of what we've seen so far in the school year tremendously from what we've seen before, those are great things to know. Great kudos to our PTO, you know, and their countless hours of service, and just the incredible diversity that, the activities that are offered to our students as well. And, you know, I mentioned earlier, I read in the fiscal financial report, the acceptance of donations, you know, just those three items alone totaled up $8,458.48 this month, and every month, we see a lot of donations like that. Congratulations again also to the Bethel Park Hockey Team, I mean, USA national champs, that's incredible. You know, we're one school district, and wow, you know, that's pretty, pretty stinking amazing. I remain ever impressed at the countless hours of service of people donating their times, their talent, their service, you know, and to the community and to the school district and the bettering of our students, and I'm just always wowed by what transpires. That's all I have to say, Madam President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Amadis.
No comments on this one either, just doing what everybody else has said.
Again, Diane, what a vision, as I got to talk with Diane and Andy Emrein at Mr. Arnoni's swearing-in the other evening, and I, you know, I just, from the bottom of my heart, as a resident and parent and community member in this district.
community member in this district, can't say enough about the benefits that are going to be achieved by having that vision and making that donation. And Andy's already got the house next door, and he's got the tearing down of it, so we're on our way to the greenhouse on that side and the rain barrel on the other side to irrigate. Oh, my gosh, it's just, and the students to grow the plants. This is just phenomenal.
We're going to have to have a security detail and keep away the deer.
What I was telling them about, I said, do you know this is going on in our community? And they said, yeah, and how are you going to keep the deer away? I hope Andy's working on that end of things. I did want to mention that on April seventh, we held a joint meeting with our municipal counterparts. I thought it went well, and I'm hopeful that we'll continue to make it an annual or semi-annual event that we, you know, all can work together, because again, we are all one community. And lastly, I just want to make the public aware of something that actually Mrs. Rose caught in an article that was in the Tribune on March twenty-sixth, and we're constantly, I don't know, say fighting a battle, but, you know, we have this ongoing issue with funding, quite frankly, funding of public education, and the charter cyber schools, on the other hand, being given quite a bit of our tax dollars going to fund their entities. Well, lo and behold, we found another instance where you all hear us talk about PlanCon and that we're in the pipeline for PlanCon dollars from our high school reimbursements that were promised to us, likewise to other school districts as well, when they entered into these contracts and built these additions or buildings. We filed all the paperwork, Plan A, B, C, how many, did we go up to I or something like that? We're in the pipeline. Well, six to ten million dollars per year from the Randell administration forward to this day have been reimbursed to charter schools for their lease requirements, or lease reimbursements, coming out of the PlanCon monies while denying the public school entities their rightful dollars for these construction reimbursements that we were promised. So it's another way that dipping is coming out of public dollars and going to fund private entities, charter schools, they're private entities. I hope people would take the time to write to their local representatives, our representatives that are in, serving us in Harrisburg, because there's just something wrong with that picture. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Good night, everyone.